I'd like to call this meeting to order. Just a reminder that if anybody would like to speak on a matter before the commission, fill out a blue card and add it to the staff. And when the item comes before the planning commission, you'll be called up. If you want to speak on something other than what's on tonight's agenda, you could also fill out a blue card and we'll have a moment, in a moment, we'll have an opportunity for you to speak. But just remember that no action can be taken on that. It's just for you to voice your opinion on a matter that's within our jurisdiction. So with that said, roll call please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Hovey?
Here.
Commissioner Laney?
Present.
Vice Chair Lee?
Here.
Chair Oblea?
Here.
Commissioner Laney, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item three, public comments. Is there any blue cards on public comments?
No, we have not received any.
Okay, so let's go on to item four. Is there any additions or deletions or revisions to tonight's agenda?
No, Chair, I have none.
Okay. Now, we're just moving right along. That's just great. Okay, consent calendar. Do we have any comments, corrections, or concerns about the consent calendar? None? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Houston seconds it. Roll call please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye. I'm abstaining. I wasn't here last week. I was sick.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, item six, presentations, none?
Chair, we have no presentations this evening.
Okay, let's move on to item seven, public hearing. Okay, our first one is item 7.1, 7-Eleven convenience store, gas station, car wash at the campus. Do you have a presentation?
Yes, Chair, members of the planning commission. Tonight's presentation is going to be given by Melinda Lynn.
Good evening, commissioners. So before you tonight is the 7-Eleven gas station at the campus. The project involves four applications. One is for the major development review of the 7-Eleven convenience store, the gas station, and the car wash. And there's three conditional use permits. One for the gas station use, one for the car wash drive-through, and one for the off-site sales of beer and wine, a type 20 license. And this project site is zone industrial park and has a general plan destination of light industrial. So above is the project site, which is outlined in red. It is on the vacant land, which runs Archibald Avenue at the campus. And that land is split into four parcels. So the project site is on parcels two and three, which, yeah. The project site is surrounded by the proposed homestead to the north, Walmart to the east, the southern Edison easement to the south, and the Trails residential community is to the south as well. And the remainder of the campus development is to the west. And here's an aerial showing that the project site is 267 feet away from the nearest residential property at the Trails. That's from the southern edge of the project site. Shown here is the site plan for the project. The convenience store and car wash is on the corner. And the gas canopy is behind that. And the drive-through lane and parking spaces will be screened from street view. As you can see from the landscape plan, you can see the hedges lines the entire drive-through. There are two driveways onto the site. One is off Providence Way at the northern portion of the site. And the other one is off of Archibald, which is east of the site. And fueling trucks will enter through the Archibald driveway and exit onto the intersection on Providence Way. And to promote pedestrian connectivity, the applicant has provided four pedestrian connections. Two leads from the convenience store to each of the streets. Another connects to the trail within the SE easement. And another one will connect to the future development to the west. They're highlighted in blue. Since the convenience store and the car wash are located on the corner, each building elevation was designed as if it was the front of the building. Here's the south and west elevation view. Multiple building materials, colors, awnings, grills, and pop-outs were utilized in this design. So here's a front. Here's a view from Archibald Avenue. And you can see the gas canopy behind it. There will be no color banning, the 7-Eleven striping that you see at other stations. And here's a view from Providence Way. This is the exit of the car wash side. And some conditions that we propose on the major development review is a partial merger application since there's a parcel line that runs through the project and that all pedestrian connections are lit and well-defined. So moving on to the conditional use permits. The first one is for the gas station use, which it will be a 24-hour operated gas station. And it requires a conditional use permit because it has an industrial park zone. So there are 16 fueling pumps proposed, which is outlined in red. And the underground gas tanks are adjacent to it. The next conditional use permit is for the drive-through car wash. It is located at the northernmost portion of the site. And the end of the tunnel, which is the noisiest portion of a drive-through car wash, faces the north and which is away from the residential neighborhood. So noise should be projecting to the north. There are also vacuums right as you exit the drive-through, which is located in the north. So all the noisiest portions of the car wash are the furthest away it can be from residential. And then there's an exit lane in case people decide not to use the drive-through, which is the blue arrow. And the drive-through meets the required six cars of stacking as required in the zoning code. The proposed car wash is around 551 feet away from the nearest residential. And this is an area of the existing Sherwood Gas Station here on Limoneite. The car wash there is about 380 feet away from the closest residential home. And we have not received any complaints regarding noise from the car wash. Some conditions for this condition used are to make modifications seem fit, as deemed by the city. And that the drive-through would not result in any stacking issues onto Archibald. The last conditional use permit that applicant is asking for is for the off-site sales of beer and wine, a type 20. Highlighted in yellow is where beer and wine will be stored and displayed. It's located in the back of the store away from the entrance. The project site is located within track 406.09, which allows for seven onsite and four off-site alcohol licenses. Listed are the active licenses within that track. There's only three. And only one of them is for off-site sales. So there will not be an over-concentration in alcohol licenses within this track. Some conditions for the conditional use permit are what's proposed for other off-site sales of alcohol within the city, such as putting the minimum size restrictions on beer and wine containers, that the beer and wine is the furthest away from the entrance. No advertisement should be displayed in the windows. And that all employees must go through training for alcohol sales. Staff recommends approval of the major development review for the development of a 3,591 square foot gas station with 16 fueling pumps and the three conditional use permits for the establishment and operation of a gas station for a drive-through car wash and for the sales of beer and wine for off-site consumption. Commissioners, you have the following options. Either approve the project with additional changes and/or conditions, continue the public hearing and direct the applicant to make revisions, or to deny the requested applications. You have any further questions? Staff and the applicant are here.
Does that conclude your?
Yes, this concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I want to give our commissioners a chance to ask any questions to staff. This limit our comments to questions to staff only. Commissioner Charleston, do you have any questions for staff right now at this time?
I do, I have two questions. The one, when we talked about bicycle parking, we said we were going to cover it in the conditions of approval. But I didn't see it anywhere on there as far as where are they thinking they're going to do something like that at? That was my first question. You know, do we have an idea of where we want them to put it? It's already in our plan, even though it might not be drawn out yet?
It is shown on the site plan. Let me go back to it. As you can see, south of the convenience store, there's like four lines. That's where the bicycle parking is proposed to be located.
I see it. All right, that makes sense. And then the only other thing that I was hoping you could explain for myself and possibly people in the audience is can you clarify the census tract 406.9, where it says seven and four? Because a lot of times, we're getting complaints, you know, from residents saying, hey, we have enough of this, we have enough of that. And if this is what, you know, the rules are as far as the state alcohol is concerned, what does it mean to us when we talk about a tract like that? It's a portion of land, I know. But I want to make sure we clearly understand that.
So...
There you go.
All right. So what we, when you said 508429 and the numbers of the license numbers, so what they're referring to is how many licenses are permitted by ABC for the census tract? So in this case... Okay, so in this case, they are indicated by census tract and the ABC permits so many, what we call type 21 licenses and type 41, type 42. So in this case, this census tract is not over-concentrated, meaning that an additional license for ABC records, it would be something that would be allowed if the city approves it. So that's what that means in a nutshell.
Okay.
How big is that census tract? Can you give us an idea where, from what road to what road to what road? Do you have any idea right now, if I had?
It runs from east, no, sorry, west of Archibald and all the way to the edge of Eastville. And I believe it starts from north of, the northern part of Eastville all the way down to the southern part. So all along that section.
So that western strip of the city is the, okay. Thank you.
So basically, it excludes eastern portion of Archibald.
Right.
Correct. That would fall on another census tract.
Commissioner Laney, you have any questions for staff? Commissioner Hovey, do you have any questions for staff?
Who is, who is responsible for that? Well, I know Edison is. But who's responsible for enforcing that Edison cleanup, that easement there? Or maintain it? Is there a plan in place for that section? Is there a timeline for completion?
I believe if it's an easement, it's a part of the developer's responsibility. But they can, when they come up to the dice, can correct me if I'm incorrect. But I believe it is their responsibility.
The developers?
Meaning, meaning the campus. Right, no, not the residential community, but the industrial and the owners of the property that we're speaking of tonight, the campus.
Okay, because it looks like there's, where the power lines are, there's that section, which is very overgrown. And then it looks like the Trails neighborhood has their own section. I was just wondering if there was a way when, or if there was a plan already, if there was a way to look at that so that we could see if there was fencing involved there in a plan that's already been approved.
I walked the facility yesterday from one end all the way to the other. And so there is not a plan that calls for any fencing. That's not there already. The only portion that would remain that could or could not be fenced and that's subject to the commission's decision this evening is the 7-Eleven and the piece that's right there adjacent to it. And then also the adjacent mini-stores that's proposed. Everything else, if you go all the way towards the back, there's one wall at the end of one of the industrial complexes. And then the residential community on the other side has some areas that have walls and some areas that are open, that you can see across the easement into the actual community. So it's not completely walled off along the residential community and not completely walled off on ours as well. So it's that last industrial building that has the wall, a portion of it, and then various portions along the Trails community that have walls.
Okay, but who is responsible for that section that is not in the Trails? There's a Trails section, and then there's another section under the power lines. I'm trying to figure out whose responsibility is that section right there?
We'll look into that with our code enforcement team and work to keep that maintained.
Okay, but is there, I just wanted to know if there was something that was discussed that it was going to look like American Heroes Park under the power lines, where somebody went in and developed it and made it look nice? Or if that was just solely going to be someone else's responsibility?
I'm not aware of any park underneath that public utility easement, and so...
Or any plan at all for underneath?
To my knowledge, no, but we can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lee, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes. So can you go back to one of the maps where you showed Archibald? There was, yeah, that one. So I don't see any improvements proposed with the development of Archibald. Is Archibald fully, is it fully developed? Or is there still work to be done on Archibald?
So there is curb, gutter, sidewalk. But are you referring to, it's not, there are some additional developments that need to happen that were discussed with the adjacent property, which was the Walmart facility. And then according to the map, there...
Basically both. And then also up on the north side. So we still have roadway improvements to do on the north side, of course.
That is correct.
And then, of course, on the east side with the Walmart development. And then the west side, is it all done, or is it?
Not all done. The map does call for a median. So there, it's not there yet. It's a stripe, but not actually, the raised median not actually constructed at this time.
Okay. And then, I don't know if this can be done right now, but can I get a list of the uses that are allowed on their IP?
Yes, as a matter of fact, let me research that while we continue meeting.
Yeah, thank you. And then, so basically, based on the alcohol permit, the eastern side wasn't considered at all. So do we know that census tract? How many permits have been issued east of Archibald?
No, we do not. We do not.
Yeah.
Okay, I have no questions at this time. So I'll take this time to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any cards, speakers?
Yes, we have three cards. Our first speaker is Kath Boss.
Okay, we are limited to, how many minutes do we got on the timer?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay, thank you.
How many total speakers do we have tonight?
We have three, we have received three.
Okay. Thought I saw some more blue ones out there, so I just wanted to make sure everybody had theirs.
But you could take them up to...
So we have a total of seven.
Are these on the 7-Eleven also?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So how many does that make total?
The planning commission has the ability to reduce that three minutes if you desire.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
We have a total of eight cards.
Eight cards?
Correct. Eight.
Okay.
I have it.
All right, we'll do three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kath. I'm a resident of the city of Eastvale. I live very close to where the property is proposed. I wanted to make sure the planning commission is aware of several issues that I personally see with the proposed project. First of all, it would be off-site liquor sales, which is directly adjacent to a nature walk, which also connects to a park within the community. There currently is no industrial barrier or industrial barrier with decorative landscaping separating the parcel from the adjacent neighborhood. And we have concerns that there would be a potential increase in crime in the area as well as it wouldn't meet the needs of the residential community, which is housed right behind it. I would like to also make sure everyone's aware. Just yesterday, someone was arrested in the restroom of the park at the Trails. It was a gentleman hanging out in the women's restroom underneath the sink. I also would like to point out that another 7-Eleven in Eastvale was robbed several weeks ago. So we think that this would bring a negative flavor to the community, especially a part of the community which directly butts up against a residential neighborhood. And I wanted to make sure that everyone's aware that I do not approve of this project. Furthermore, there are issues with the Trails, the walking trail. I know it was discussed previously that it's overgrown and unkempt because the developer has not maintained the property appropriately. There also is insufficient lighting due to the power lines overhead combined with the fact that the airport's located in close vicinity. So these walking trails, which will be near a place which sells off-site liquor, will be dark at night, poorly lit, and potentially dangerous for the residents in that area. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next person?
Jonathan DeDepo?
Thank you all. My name's Jonathan DeDepo, resident of Eastvale since the Trails were constructed about four years ago or so. We enjoy living in Eastvale. We are against the development of the 7-Eleven project and reasons why are similar to the resident who stated them before. This project, as you guys mentioned, has a direct connection to a trail that leads into our community. There are no walls, no barriers. Anyone can easily just walk right over after purchasing their liquor into our residential area. As mentioned before, the area is poorly lit. There are not any lights that we could see somebody walking across. The 24/7 business is also a concern to us, whereas we can have people walking into our neighborhood in the middle of the night right through a poorly lit area. And also due to the limited police resources that we have all seen, we are very concerned about response time for anything that may occur. We are also concerned about the proximity of this 7-Eleven to the one just down the street on Archibald and Sliceman. We don't know how many 7-Elevens Eastvale needs. I don't know if there is a quota that we have to meet for 7-Elevens, but just wanted to let you know. Also, road improvements, which was brought up earlier. Thank you for bringing that up. The area is already very congested, and the road is not developed appropriately to handle this kind of traffic. And also in regards to the alcohol permits that were mentioned before, if you guys know, there is a Sprouts in development and Walmart across the street, which both will likely have alcoholic beverages as well. We also, we drive by the 7-Eleven there on Archibald and Sliceman, and we do see suspicious characters, things going on that shouldn't be. We've seen homeless, transients, and that's not something that we want near to our residences. So thank you for hearing us, and we do not approve of this 7-Eleven going in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
Danny Jong?
Hi. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Danny Jong. I'm actually, I'm a sergeant of police for the city of Los Angeles. About 13 years on the job. Ten of that is, was in the field. I worked fires and gangs. And also working downtown L.A. schedule area. And I'm a resident of Eastvale. I do live in the Trails community. And very objectively against this project as far as 7-Eleven going in. And this is from my experience working law enforcement. At least in our city, in L.A., where I work, numerous radio calls generated, numerous crimes are related to 7-Elevens because of the fact that they are open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Alcohol sales, they do get robbed. People congregate in the parking lots of 7-Elevens. Transients hang out there, the panhandle, which also creates a quality of life issue. And again, this is L.A., not Eastvale. Living here, though, we already have a 7-Eleven down by Sliceman and Archibald, which is maybe less than a mile away. But there's already problems there that I'm pretty sure you guys either are aware of, or if not. But I don't know how many radio calls have been generated at that 7-Eleven since it's been established, or how much crime reports has been connected to that area. My personal experience with that 7-Eleven, I went there to get gas, and my card was fraudulently used. And that was one time. So again, I read that, obviously on the city's theory, there's community pride and prosperity. I'm pretty sure everybody here that represents the city, you're proud of the fact that Eastvale is known for its safety, its community, it's for the family that live here, for the development. So that's why I see communities put first. You guys all want people to come over here and thrive and flourish. But prosperity as far as the business coming in, should we sacrifice the prosperity for businesses, I mean, against the safety of the community that actually lives here? And that's the reason why I wouldn't recommend it, because it can only get worse. Just my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person?
Anthony Chaco?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for listening to us. First, just want to tell you guys why I'm here, why I'm not here. I'm here to, first of all, thank you and also express my opposition to this project. But just know that it's nothing against you or anyone that's had a hand in the project and putting it together. You guys obviously take a lot of time and care in your community to be on the board, to be sitting through this process. So I appreciate that. I'm here in uniform, not here to intimidate anybody. I'm a motor officer. I take my bike home. I live in Eastvale, and I just got off shift, and I barely made it. But all that being said, I just want to highlight some points that have already been brought up. But I just want to give just another voice to the concern as I do live in the community, the Trails, the Rio Symphony community. In regards to the self-storage, I was just thinking, it's not in line with the priorities or the community character that's been documented in our recent citywide survey. Looking at some of the desired buildings and stores that people, our community, want to see in Eastvale, this is not among them.
Let's keep your comments to the 7-Eleven right now.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you.
In regards to the 7-Eleven, again, that is not in line with our community citywide survey. The closest thing we have resembling that is drugstores, if you'll notice, in that citywide... If you'll notice, uh, in that citywide survey, it's question number fifteen, bottom of the list, came in drugstores, very bottom of the list. It's a long list. Only one percent of respondents want that. Drugstores, not even 7-Eleven convenience stores. Now, in regards to 7-Eleven convenience stores, like, like Denny, uh, who works for L.A., I work for Glendale Sister City right next door. But I'll tell you right now, personally, we deal with a lot of calls for 7-Eleven. Calls for service, transients, crimes, robberies, lots of fights, lots of people hang out there. This is the type of thing you expect and you don't have to be a police officer to know this. Uh, any, any one of you guys know what it's like at Archibald and Sliceman at the 7-Eleven? Um, I have people that I try to convince and I've moved several partners to Eastville. Um, other Glendale officers live in Eastville. And when I try to sell Eastville because I'm proud of it, I really am, they say, "What's up with your 7-Eleven?" They're not even from here. They're not police officers. And I'm like, "Yeah, yeah, it's some of the transient point." And I get it. It's from north to south is a transient point. From east to west, transient point. I get it. But we get lots of calls for service there. And so you have that element and you're just adding another one. And I just think it's a little absurd. You'd have a hard time reasoning that we need another 7-Eleven considering ones that are already in walking distance, barely a mile away when we're proposing this one. And if that, if you're in a car and you just, you need to stop because it's convenient, it's a convenience store, it has two miles east and two miles west, right into Chino and right on Hammer. I mean, I, I just see difficulty in, in trying to justify this project. I know we pride ourselves, community, pride, prosperity. Should, would it be prosperous? Yeah, financially, I suppose. Community? Well, that's kind of why we're here opposing it. But pride, you're going to lose a little element of that when we give up a little bit of the safety. And I don't feel like compromising and I don't think you want to compromise either. You wouldn't be serving on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one?
Jennifer Breyouhart.
Hi. Um, I live in the Trails as well and my backyard actually backs up to that project. And so I have three children. They play at the park. They were at the park yesterday when the person was being arrested. So that's a concern, but nobody also mentioned that this long project with 7-Eleven in that complex backs up to the riverbed. And the riverbed, we have people, transients, kids, you know, coming in through the riverbed, through the parking lot. And there is no wall or divider from the riverbed to the industrial to the proposed public storage, 7-Eleven. That whole thing that borders the trail and the pathway has no wall. So these people are walking into that area, the parking lot, walking through the trails into our parks where my three-year-old plays, my five-year-old plays, you know, and these are things that I know our neighborhood is here because we're very concerned that you add in a twenty-four-hour thing, you add in alcohol, you're adding in a lot of invitation of, you know, crime or things that can happen that we don't necessarily want to think about on a daily basis as we're going to bed at night. Let, let's make sure that we look, is the backyard, you know, secure? There is no lighting. You can't see out there, you know? My, my bedroom, my master bedroom faces the trail. And I don't oppose, I don't want this project and then our children to be at risk for what could happen. And I don't want to take that risk of it could happen to my children, let alone anybody else's child that plays at Symphony Park. And the, the park would need a wall with that trail. And if this thing goes in, it's something that I would really urge you guys to look into as far as for safety and with the riverbed and everything else that's happening. And I put in another card, but that was for the, you get to talk about something else?
Yes.
So that's what that is. Sorry. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Any other cards?
Natalie Weaver. Hi, guys. Thank you for listening to us. I know you guys have a really tough job in deciding what happens with the fabulous city of Eastvale. We pride ourselves on ranking higher than the city of Irvine. I actually work in the city of Irvine. I've worked at U.C. Irvine for seventeen and a half years and I commute because I love this community. And I tell people of Irvine, I live in Eastville and we're higher ranked than you. But I urge you to look at their city plans because I guarantee you, when I drive through that city every day, which I just did today, they would not allow a 7-Eleven to go near residential homes, let alone from a Walmart that's already going to be selling alcohol. I also live in the Trails. Um, my street is a cul-de-sac. We are one of the ones that faces directly into the campus. There's no wall, there's no barrier. There are trucks being, coming and going at all hours of the night with honking their horns at ten-thirty, eleven o'clock to signal to the people to open up their roll gates. Uh, it's quite frustrating. I can't tell you how many times I go on the E-Citizens app and report this because I have a five-year-old whose bedroom window faces the campus. Uh, so that's a source of frustration, but I get as being a homeowner and buying in there, that was a fault of our builder for not telling us that, which is a whole separate issue. Um, card readers. Card reader theft is a huge issue here in the city of Eastvale. You go to the Vons or to the Ralphs, you put your card in. I can tell you, go onto the Facebook page and ninety percent of the posts are people's cards being ripped off from the Ralphs gas station. That has no, no security coming in or out. Where the gas station is proposed, there is nothing in the line of sight to prevent anyone coming down live and night, which is an access point and a thoroughfare into our city, to go in and put in card readers. You're now relying on the employees there to be checking the card, the card readers themselves, making sure that the tape isn't tampered with. If they're going to be selling alcohol and monitoring everything else, they just don't have time for that. Um, also, we pride ourselves on being a safe city for our children. We try to have healthy food choices for our children. That is directly across the street from, as Officer Jenny and everyone else has said, it's directly across the street from a public park and a public, uh, skate park that's across the street to the east of Archibald. How easy is it for these kids to ride their skateboards or bikes over to the 7-Eleven and start picking up unhealthy food? Again, that's on me as a parent to make sure what my children is using, eating, but you're just giving them a plethora of more, plus with the Walmart right behind it. Um, I know I have seventeen seconds left, but lights and cameras are an issue at Walmart. I hope if you do approve this, which I'm completely opposing, that you would put the same restraints on them as far as lighting and cameras. There's issues with the Chino Airport coming in. Or if you allow it, allow us to build a wall and protect our community and we'll deal with our HOA to make it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next?
Grant Ross.
Is this regarding, uh, 7-Eleven also?
It is.
Okay.
Uh, I'm Grant Ross. Uh, so I'm the developer for, for the campus. Um, thank you for having us. We, as I've conveyed before, it's a pleasure doing business in the city of Eastvale. Um, we've got the Homestead, which is a property directly to the north, and then we're obviously doing the Sprouts Shopping Center, which we're hoping to break ground in the next thirty days on. Um, so it's been an absolute pleasure doing business here. As it relates to the 7-Eleven, you know, I think it's a, it's a good economic benefit in terms of retail sa- uh, sales tax. Um, in terms of the median, the median can't be constructed until Walmart extends the road and so there's just not enough room there. Um, Walmart may or may not be built depending on how things go. We've approached them on several different occasions. Um, and so, you know, what I can share with you is that this is either the most expensive or one of the most expensive, uh, 7-Elevens that's being constructed nationwide. We spent about eight months with the planning commission, or sorry, the, the planning staff working through, uh, the design of the project, the location of the buildings, um, everything else. So, uh, I want to address a couple of other things. In terms of the Edison easement, the, the, what you see right here on the, on the aerial there, half of the, to the southern half of the Edison easement is actually controlled by the association of the Trails community. The original Trails project was actually zoned industrial and then they converted it to, to, uh, to residential. And so on our side, if there are issues, you know, we're, we're happy to address them, their concerns relative to the trail, happy to, to address them. Um, I encourage obviously the community in the association of the Trails to talk to their own association about keeping that other area clean.
Order please. You're not at the podium, so you're going to have no comments from the gallery, please. Thank you.
So in 7-Eleven, we'll address this and they're here to, to, to present the project. But from my understanding, there aren't really any calls that come in relative to issues with the current 7-Elevens. You know, we, we're doing the merge center. Uh, we're having a difficult time filling that, that space up in terms of, you know, even with Sprouts being the anchor. And so the opportunity to have another sales tax generator right here is very difficult outside of 7-Eleven. We've been approached by auto-related uses. We don't want to build another industrial building here. It's zoned industrial. Our preference is to do something that, a 7-Eleven here, which generates a lot of sales tax. Certainly that's an issue with, you know, the city contemplating dropping another one percent on sales tax revenue. So I'm hoping you guys will support the project. We're here to address it. If there are owners that have issues on the campus, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Vina Saghar.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Vina Saghar. I'm a resident of Eastville for last seventeen years, so I'm in favor of this project of 7-Eleven. Uh, I mean, my kids go to the schools of Eastville. I have four kids and I've been living here. I don't think so 7-Eleven is any problem to the community. As somebody said about the crime, crime could be anywhere. So those depends on each city that how they handle the crime. 7-Eleven or a gas station does not bring a crime. So the new 7-Elevens have a very great look. It has a upscale look. And if you go personally to any new 7-Eleven, you'll see the food choices as well. Uh, what kind of new food choices it has. Recently, there was a 7-Eleven day on July seven, uh, July eleventh every year. And, uh, I can share pictures as well that the big lines of kids and families, they come to get slurpee and they're so happy and they so much appreciate about the 7-Eleven in the town. So, uh, it is every year. And I see so many families that come and they say that we are so glad that you are here. So according to me, once again, that 7-Eleven does not bring any crime. So crime, it is like any city can have a crime and it depends how the city handles those crimes. We need gas station, otherwise, uh, we are taking our tax dollars to Ontario or Chino Preserve next to us where the new car wash is. Uh, we need a car wash, absolutely, otherwise we will be driving on Sliceman and getting a car wash done over there and giving our money to Chino or driving to Ontario. So according to me, I think being a resident and not living far away from this new site, so I'm very close to that site as well. So I prefer that 7-Eleven should be there and I have no objection and I'm in full support of that. Plus, uh, uh, I want to mention that, uh, uh, as somebody said about the noise and all that. So that is, uh, not, uh, only from a gas station or car washes. So that is as they said, that industrial area, there are warehouses and all that. So they have a concern about putting, uh, wall right there or a fence. Those, that is a separate issue. That city can look into that. But having, uh, 7-Eleven, I fully support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others?
Our last speaker is Christian Charbonne.
Good evening, Commissioner. How are you? My name is Christian Charbonne, Senior Project Manager with Tate and Associates. We, uh, represent 7-Eleven in the designing and construction of this use. Couple of things I just wanted to mention. Um, in terms of the site not, sites not being maintained and overgrown or that they are overgrown, um, this site will be graded and built and we will, in, in fact, solve that problem by bringing, um, this project to bear. This project would be mostly landscaping. If you have a chance to look at the landscaping plan in detail, it's mostly open space. So development rights have been basically retired other than the convenience store and the gas canopy. Um, in terms of it being poorly lit, um, it is not in the interest of 7-Eleven to have a poorly lit facility. Um, they want to know what's going on throughout the four corners of their entire, um, site for the sake of, uh, patrons, uh, those who would be visiting and leaving and, uh, their, uh, employees as well. So wanted to throw that out there to you guys as well. The land use currently allows, um, this use to go forward. The, the general, there's general plan consistency as well as zoning code consistency for this project to be allowed, at least currently. Um, so we, we want to recognize that as well. And then lastly, in terms of crime, um, I, in a previous role, in a previous life, I built lots and lots of retail in and around greater Los Angeles. And I can tell you that the crime challenges of Los Angeles are, are, which is one of the biggest cities in the world, completely different than what happens in the city of Eastvale. And I don't, and on some level, I don't think it's fair, uh, to compare the two. I appreciate, you know, officers in uniform who defend our communities. Um, but it, it is a little bit of a different animal and, um, uh, that's, it's, uh, I think a stretch to compare the two. So those are my comments.
Thank you. That's our last.
Yes, that was our last speaker.
Okay. That said, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. So, um, do we have any further questions or comments for the applicant or staff? Or comments in general? Um, Commissioner Hovey, start with you.
I guess back to my Edison easement. Um, because I wasn't concerned about the, uh, landscaping at the 7-Eleven specifically. I'm concerned about in between the two communities. Um, I am concerned about, um, traffic coming in there or who is responsible for it. Um, and if we don't even know who's responsible for it, um, how do we remedy the situation? I do feel, though, that the Trails neighborhood should possibly look at their HOA to construct a wall or something there on their side. But the Edison easement part is still, um, still needs to be remedied and I'm not sure who to contact.
We'll, we'll work on that.
We do have the answer, so we will work on it. But we do know who controls which half of it. We did get that information for you, so.
And I'm sorry, were lighting, was lighting and cameras addressed in the, um, in the proposal?
I believe that's one of the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any further questions? Commissioner Hovey? Commissioner Charles?
I, I guess these, these comments for me are to staff. Uh, are you going to address some of the concerns that the residents had before we close this and take a vote? Because I wrote down twelve things that they're, they're asking about. And not that we're here to address the Trails, but at some point, we need to, you know, I, I don't want, the issues we're having at the Trails Park should not interfere with what's going on with what we're voting on. And I want to make sure that if, if staff is going to address some of that, are we going to keep it separate? And if they want to talk about things like the fencing, the lighting, that, that's not what we're here to talk about tonight, not right now anyway. And police response time, that's not for us to, you know, talk about right now. But road improvements, they made that clear. We couldn't do the road improvements yet because until the east side is done, we can't put a median in if there's not enough room. So that, that totally makes sense. Looking at the package that you gave us, crime was talked about heavily in that. And you, and I think staff did a great job explaining that if you look at that 7-Eleven versus any other convenience store, that there is no increase in crime, just based on the 7-Eleven of where we live. I'm not going to talk about L.A. I have business in L.A. that I deal with all the time and I, I understand there's a difference. But as far as out here, we did do that survey in the package and looked at, we did have the local police department comment and tell us were there issues? And they found that there were no issues or any increases. So I want to make sure everybody's clear on that. That the perception of what might be said is different than what, when we talk to our own police department. So we need to be clear on that. Uh, but when they talk about noises from the, the distribution center with trucks honking, is that something that, Gina, you think we should be addressing from staff? Or is that, should that be a complete separate thing? I'm trying to get direction, I guess, what I'm asking.
Right. So, um, in terms of noise, uh, the 7-Eleven has, as far as sequoias concerned, has adequately, uh, demonstrated everything on site that we would normally require from any other business of this type.
has adequately, uh, demonstrated everything on site that we would normally require from any other business of this type.
But some of these other things on the Trails, do you, you know, I'm, I'm asking for somewhat of an explanation. Is it something we should disregard at this time?
We, we will, we will investi- we'll, we'll investigate.
Let staff take care of that.
Yeah, we'll investigate all those comments on the Trails. Those are separate issues. So if it's, if it's a maintenance on the trail, we'll, we'll work with the property owner or the maintenance, the person responsible for maintaining that property, just like we would do any code enforcement request.
Okay. And I know it's in the minutes. I just want to make sure we have coverage on this. No, no, no further comments or questions from me.
Commissioner Lany.
Commissioner Lany?
I have no comments at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Lee?
Yes, I have several comments. Um, so I'm looking at this, um, and the reason why I asked for the IP zone, um, list of, uh, land uses that are, that are consistent with the IP zone is because, you know, we, somebody brought it up. Uh, we, we did a survey. Um, our city went out to the residents. They gave us what they want to see in the future in our, in our communities. And correct me if I'm wrong, but none of them really put gas station as something that we need in our community. So I, I, I'm trying to see the, see the connection between what the residents have spoken already and said, hey, here's a list of things that we're lacking in our city and these are the things that we really, really want to see. And then all of a sudden, all the proposals that we're ki- kind of getting, that, that we're, we're kind of, you know, getting in, you know, these days are gas stations and drive-throughs. And I thought we were, we're kind of done discussing future drive-throughs and, and car washes and, and gas stations. Um, but, and, 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 and again, it's not like there is no gas station. Great. You got, you got your gas station approved just north of it, Chevron, right? Just even though I, I put a whole bunch of conditions on there, you still got that approved. And then you have another gas station proposed. And then you have, you know, probably with the Walmart development, there probably will going to be a proposal for a gas station again. So again, I, I, I think there's a little bit of disconnect on what our community kind of wants. And then, uh, what we're getting in terms of proposals for development. And I, and, and that's, again, the, the good things that I see here are clearly this is the best looking 7-Eleven that I've ever seen. Yes, I, I, I'll give you that. Um, but I think the bottom line is that the uses that we are seeing are not consistent with what, what our communities are kind of wanting. And that's, that's unfortunately, um, and that, that is, that is my problem, uh, with, with, with the proposal. Not, nothing in detail in terms of the actual proposal. I mean, again, I think you did the home, did your homework. I like the EV parking, white parking. Um, you have the, you have great architectural, architecture in terms of the building. Those are all fine, but I think I, I, I just can't push myself to vote for something that our community never said they, they wanted. So. That's my comment.
A couple of questions for staff. Uh, I know when the, um, when housing development went in, um, they, we required that they make improvements to the Edison easement, uh, under the, under the power lines. Uh, we, and I believe we did the same thing with the campus when, when they, um, when they came before us, we required that they do some improvements under the Edison power lines. Am I correct?
Chair, yeah, the, yeah, the Edison power lines have, uh, improvements that are JCS DEH controls the southern half, uh, Jason to the Trails. And then the campus controls the northern half. Uh, so there would have, yes, that's the answer to the question.
So the campus does control the sou- the northern half?
There's a portion of it according to.
What were the improvements that we required for them to make? Can you refresh my memory? Do, do you know offhand?
That information I do not have, Chair.
Does anybody in, in the planning department have recollection to what we? Cause I know we required them to do something under those power lines and, uh, it looks like there's nothing been done yet. So.
We can, we can review those conditions and work with them.
Applicant want to come up or the developer, please? And can you refresh our memory?
So on our, on our portion.
Mr. Terry, you want to open the public hearing again if you want to have the applicant speak again?
Okay, we will open public hearing. Go ahead.
The, uh, the, so we were required to put these meandering trails is what they call them. And then plant some sort of vegetation. So it was a landscape plan that got approved. Everything met the requirements associated with getting a CUP other, or not CUP, but a, uh.
Design review or?
Yeah, no, getting, getting the building permits. We had to satisfy those requirements. If there are issues associated with it, I, I, it, there is parts overgrown. I don't think it's from our side. But if there's, if there's elements to improve, then happy to approve it, approve it. I'm happy to give, we have an association manager that I'm happy to give the phone number if, if there's issues associated with someone honking, whatever else. Certainly we want to be good neighbors, um, and facilitate anything we can to, to limit that. So we'll try to ju- not only address the, the trail situation, but also this. You're, you're limited, even though we own the land, you're limited in terms of structures you could put on there because Edison.
Right.
You know, it's, it's our land, but it's not our land, you know? So if there are things that we can do to, to enhance that, let's, let's have the discussion. We do have, you know, association that manages that whole maintenance area. Um, but we want to be good neighbors.
So my question was, have those improvements been made?
They've been satisfied. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a meandering trail and some planting. There's no, you can't put any structures there.
Right, right, right. So you do have your, uh, improvements up under the easement, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, let's see. Do you have a question for?
I do, because I was there today.
Okay.
And the, it is, I didn't see any trail from your part of the property. And, um, and the plants were at least, I don't know, four feet high. Um, and it looked like a mess. And so that's, that's why this is my concern. That's why I wanted to know who, and I was, I was on your property looking down. And this kind of goes back to the, another issue that we had, uh, with the other 7-Eleven, which was we're gonna look into it or we're gonna get code enforcement to take care of it, but it's after we are gonna approve something. And so then I kind of feel like those types of things should be done beforehand. And so, um, like the cleanup at the 7-Eleven should be done before we approve to grant them anything else. The cleanup on something that your, uh, development company owns should be done or should have been done beforehand. It should be a forethought and not something that we're gonna have to look at later and hope that you get done. Um, it should just be done if that's what you were required to do. I, I have concerns. I don't really have a problem with the 7-Eleven. Being there is beautiful. Um, but I have a concern with approving something and then, and then waiting to see that the city's gonna look into it later. I would rather that it's done now or we put a condition on it that, that it has to be done.
I'm happy to address it. I wasn't aware that there was an issue associated with the trail. I, I, I drove by today. I, I thought that the overgrown really had to do with the other half of the property. I'll address it immediately. Joe and Iran's obviously not here anymore. But I can assure you that on countless occasions, he called us and had us clean up the DIT property to the north, the Walmart property, the, the, the DIT site that we're doing the merge on before we took ownership. So us as developers, I mean, we've, we've committed to the city, something like about $400 million worth of development, either planned or, or built. And so it's in our best interest to do what we can. Um, I'll address it immediately. I'll call our association and I'll call the, the gardener tomorrow to address this. I'm happy to meet with the association and walk, walk the site tomorrow. I'll be out here, um, and address these things. It's, it's not intentional. We want everything to look good. We pay a significant amount of money. We, we require the association to manage all landscape associated with the entire site. So it's, it's not intentional. Certainly we want everyone to be happy and we'll address it immediately. We're, 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 yeah, I mean, that's kind of, kind of where it stands. So in, and in terms of trash in the existing site, I don't know if there are issues associated with the, the three and a half acres there that is vacant. I, I wasn't aware that, you know, we've had to do some things, but again, we've been good neighbors at our own cost, cleaning up other people's sites in the neighborhood. Before there was a 7-Eleven, we had people from trying to start fires on our building pads. You know, I mean, eh, we're, we're doing what we can. Um, but again, I'll give these people my cell phone. If they have honks and other issues, we want to address them. So, you know, we, we, this is a special place for us. We enjoy doing business. It's the reason we continue to put our flag down here. And, uh, and we try to bring a, an overall benefit from infrastructure, jobs, economic, everything. So.
Okay, thank you. Let's, uh, don't leave yet. I still have some more questions. It's my turn, you guys. Hold on. Um, I know the purpose for not having walls on the campus is we want a connectivity between the businesses and the Trails. So they have opportunity to do walks on their breaks and on their lunch hours. So we don't want to fence them in. But am I correct in assuming that there is at least a chain lane fence between the, the campus and the wash behind you guys, the flood control channel behind you? Is there?
There is, you're correct. There is a, there is a fence.
There is a chain lane fence there?
On our property, there is.
There is a chain lane fence. There is some kind of fence between you and the, the flood control channel behind your, uh, on the west end of your development?
Yeah, the, 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 you know, I think it was dictated, like what you're mentioning, that the screening and the connectivity and all the, everyone was trying to achieve. It wasn't dictated by us. We were kind of told this is how everybody wants to do it.
Yes, right.
As it relates to, so in the back there, I had to pull up, there are some concrete screen walls associated with one of the buildings back there. There's, there are restrictions associated with what we can do with that whole flood control area because it's such a protected Army Corps type of deal. But, um, there is a chain link fence. I don't know about on the Trails portion, but in terms of our portion, and there were some pomegranate trees and stuff I remember during construction, we were grading, so.
I see. Okay. So there is some type of fence back there be- between your development and the west end where the wash comes by?
Correct.
Okay. Um, what was another question I had? It's one I believe you don't write it down. Well, thank you for now. I will, um, oh, you have a question for, uh, applicant?
Um, earlier you mentioned that you wanted to go this route of a 7-Eleven because you didn't want to just put up another warehouse or another industrial.
Or we got a lot of interest from auto body or, or tire places. I, you know, it's, yeah, that would, that is our strong preference.
Um, just out of curiosity, what other types of businesses were considered for this parcel?
I mean, we're, we're doing the merge, right? And so it's, it's market driven. Um, you know, we're not getting a call from, it, we're kind of, we're, we're, we're not the prettiest person at the dance on this location, right? I mean, it's, it's good. It's great. We're, we're doing the homestead. Lime and I will eventually connect through. We're, you know, we're fronting the millions of dollars associated with that whole Lime and I connection. Um, in terms of just market demand, it's, it's the auto related uses, you know, the alternative is doing industrial. It's not, you know, the, the, the merge is driving where the, where you're gonna get some of the retail uses that everyone's thirsty for. Um, in terms of this location, it's not, it's not that. I mean, it's, we're not getting any interest, you know, from anyone else. So those would be it. And it's, and you can look at the industrial uses in the IP zone, you know, it's, what you're comparing is, is 7-Eleven and this or other alternative industrial uses which, which aren't glamorous, you know, quite frankly. So, um, and they don't generate sales tax revenue. I think one 7-Eleven generates w- one full-time cop a year in terms of, in terms of the economic benefit that it provides, rather than an industrial building or an industrial use going there. So, um, you know, we, 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 we keep, we try to capture the market. We can't create it. Um, I can tell you that people have sent me on the merge restaurant list and I call, call these people me personally and try to drive businesses to the city. I mean, we, we, we go out of our way. We're a small organization. We go out of our way to try to be, you know, the best that we can be for the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
We have more, more questions. It's a, it's a kind of related to that question. I know, I know staff has a big push to do some marketing work on especially getting some of the restaurants for our city. Have you worked with our staff on any, any of that? I mean, is it, okay?
They, they.
We work really closely with him on, on getting restaurants, uh, to the merge. This side right here i- isn't a restaurant site. A, a restaurant site would go on a larger commercial like the merge or where we just got Hammer Place, where we got two, uh, uh, heroes and a fi- and, and a chop house.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not just talking about restaurant, but I'm just saying in terms of getting.
He, he works really closely with our economic development team and Gina and myself. We're, we'd probably talk with Grant once if not twice a week.
Okay. I, I mean, it, it's, yeah. So I, again, I think we have a bigger problem as a city if, if we are dependent on the sales tax of a 7-Eleven coming in. I think, I don't know. I, I, I know how hard our staff works on getting new businesses out here and how hard we work on marketing ourselves as a, as a new city. Um, but I, it's, it's, I, I'm, it's still puzzling to me that we can't, we can't get more businesses out here, um, to our city when our, you know, we have the demographics, we have, and we have the desire from the community for businesses to, to be, to be here. And, and so, again, I, you know, it's, it's kind of shocking for me to hear that there's nobody that wants to come in except for 7-Eleven. I think that's, that's, that's for our city, that's, that's, that's a problem. That's a bigger problem than just approving your project, in my opinion.
Uh, please refresh my memory. If I was correct, or if I'm correct, um, previously you were, that plot of land was approved for a office building and then maybe a medical center or some medical buildings or something like that there. And then also, it was also later approved for a retail multipurpose type of, uh, function. What happened to all that type of stuff?
The, the retail was, we, we actually got, the retail was a gas station, a drive-through and a bunch of stuff that the city didn't, you know, that, that they didn't want and we had to alter our plans. So it's not, it's not zoned for retail. Uh, you know, this, this is a use that is allowed. Um, and so.
The office building didn't happen or?
It's, this is, no, no. I mean, there's just no.